Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call the Missoula City Council Meeting of April 26th to order. This is a Zoom webinar meeting. Thank you for joining us this evening. Pardon me, there are a number of ways to participate, some of which you most recently saw on your screen. But if you're joining us as part of the Zoom webinar this evening, I will recognize members of the audience for public comment as the evening progresses. You simply raise your hand and unmute yourself and recognized. And we'll ask that you keep those comments to about three minutes, if you would. If you're dialing in this evening, I'll recognize you by the last four digits of your phone number. And you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and mute and unmute with star six. And we'll begin this evening with attendance. And I am trying to ascertain who is missing this evening. I usually have to write it down, and I didn't do that this evening. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. And the person I'm missing will be upset. Who am I missing?
Amber Sherrill. Amber Sherrill is not here.
I had a note from Amber. Thank you. I appreciate that. We have minutes of the meeting of April 19th without objection that we approved. Seeing none, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Ray Bynum.
Thanks, Mayor Ingean. So committees are also held via Zoom webinar, just like the city council meeting. And this is the schedule for this coming Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. In order to join any of these meetings, head on over to the city's website. You can just search the city of Missoula in your favorite web browser. And we should be at the top of your search results. In the middle of the page is a meetings button. And if you click the meetings button, you will get to all of our agendas and minutes for all of these meetings. Well, agendas, minutes after we're done. But and at the top of each one of those agendas is are the instructions and a link to join. So you can either join the meeting by phone or by computer. And here is the schedule for this coming Wednesday, the 28th. Public Works Committee will meet from 8:45 in the morning to 9:45. Public Safety and Health meets from 10:00 AM to 10:45. Land Use and Planning Committee will start at 11:00 AM and go until noon. The Administration Finance Committee meets from 12:30 to 1 o'clock. And the Committee of the Whole round out the day from 1:15 to 2:30 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Bynum. Any changes to the committee schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda items here, or generally approved unanimously in council standing committees. And we consider these items all at once to save a little time on Monday evenings. We'll take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Ray Bynum.
Thanks, Mayor Ingean. And tonight's consent agenda has, I think, nine items. The first, as always, is to pay the city's bills. That's item number one. We call accounts payable claims here at the city. So the motion is to approve claims. And the amount of $2,518,992 for checks that are dated tomorrow, April 27th, 2021. Number two is to prove and authorize the mayor to sign agreement number B105-2017 with MacArthur Means and Wells Architects for the Catlin Police Station remodel project in the amount of $15,926.86. Number three is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ally Kane to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board for term that begins immediately and expires on September 30th of 2021. Number four is to approve the purchase of a Vermeer S925 TX compact utility loader with attachments for the Parks Department from Vermeer Rocky Mountain of Billings, Montana in the amount of $35,348.32. And this is a cooperative purchasing agreement through Sourcewell. Sourcewell does bidding, and we tag on to the bid that is is secured for governments through Sourcewell. Number five is to prove and authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Montana Department of Transportation to lease four flusher trucks for street sweeping in an amount not to exceed $200,000. Number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Kittleson and Associates Incorporated to create the Higgins Avenue Corridor Plan for a amount not to exceed $220,000. Number seven is a resolution. And the city council is adopting a resolution, Missoula City Council, which finds the Montana Department of Environmental Quality. Hang on here. I need to open this one up because it's long and I don't have all of the text visible without opening it. Let's start that one over. So this one is to adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council, which finds the Montana Department of Environmental Quality conclusion regarding the anticipated future uses for the Burlington Northern Missoula Facility in Missoula's North Side Neighborhood unacceptable and requests recognition of residential use as a future anticipated land use and to appropriately accommodate that use in the DEQ's final remedy decision and cleanup plan. Number eight is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the professional services contract with RESPEC. That's R-E-S-P-E-C Company LLC for work on the Milwaukee Trail through Tooele Park in an amount not to exceed $55,329.50. And finally, number nine is the first reading and preliminary adoption of an ordinance. Tonight's city council is setting a public hearing for May 10th of 2021 and preliminarily adopting an ordinance rezoning properties located at 2103, 2103 and a half to 2015 and to, I think that's a typo. It says 2105 and a half, but I think it's probably supposed to be 2015 and a half, River Road, and legally described as that part of Lot 24 of Cogan and Dinsmore's Orchard Homes subdivision and a parcel of land lying in Lot 24 of Cogan and Dinsmore's Orchard Homes addition located in Section 28 Township 13 North Range 19 West Principal Moretti in Montana. From, here's the meat of this story. RT10, which is a residential 10-two unit townhouse zoning district in the city limits to RT4.5, which is residential 4.5-two unit townhouse zoning designation.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Bynum. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening? Ms. West.
I just had a quick comment on item 5.7. I wanted to remind folks that the public comment period for the Northern Burlington rail yard ends on Sunday, the second, which means if you want to mail something, you actually have to get it in the mail on the first. But emails are accepted through the second. So please comment in support of a residential level cleanup for the site. Thank you.
And Ms. Merritt.
Marty, for the record, I'll be abstaining from item 5.8 due to my husband's working for RESPEC, just to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. Seeing no further discussion, anyone in the audience care to comment on the consent agenda this evening? I skipped public comment altogether as well, didn't I? I apologize. We'll get back to that. Kristen?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. I'm a little nervous. It's my first time public speaking in a long time. So I wanted to speak on the rezoning. I've been a resident of the River Road area for a good portion of the time since 94. I'm three blocks east of where the rezoning is proposed. And the main thing I just asked you, I'm asking you to vote no on this tonight. If you're voting, again, I'm new. I'm not totally clear on this process. But if you're not voting tonight, I'd urge more consideration and looking at this. There's a couple of things just right off the bat that have not. I mean, there's, I believe, an error in the numbers right at the top, which I know that's a clerical error. There's also an error on the maps, is my understanding. It actually shows some areas, which is the neighboring landowner's property, as was pointed out to me by that person today. So I think there's just some concerns about the attention that's even gotten at this point, which is really just the theme, unfortunately, here for voices in our neighborhood being heard. What I noticed, just briefly having a chance to look over the letter on rezoning. We're talking about the growth policy here, which is great, but there is a zoning currently in place here. And what we're talking about with this rezoning is a change. And sorry, I should smile. That like helps. I just get so nervous and like dialed in. Take a breath. We're talking about doubling the zoning here. So just to refer overall to the growth policy, to put one more spot zoning in place is not feeling like it's cutting it for us here in the neighborhood. And the issue really at the heart of this is not having a voice. Again and again, rezoning is happening here. We get a blanket thing, growth policy done. There's further issues that aren't even addressed, as such as who is paying for access. That's often not clearly stated out, and it ends up being citizens more than it is the developers. And just kind of to round this off from my perspective, besides, like, we've tried for, you know, a lot of people right here on this River Road corridor to have more of a voice here. And I'm sorry if I'm. I don't mean to take your time. It's just, you know, my one chance a little bit I've had to speak out is like, we are having major issues with housing affordability here. And to continue this policy that has been in place my entire adult life of like not giving true voice to the neighborhoods, letting developers run wild, like, this rezoning is not helping that. Like, just referring to the growth policy, not individually looking at it at the point of not even having the maps correct is doing a disservice to our neighborhood. And so I'll just leave it at that. I just really urge you to think more about this. I urge you at the point to vote that you vote no on this rezoning. And let's give some citizens a little bit more time to have some voice, some actual real voice in this. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did just fine. Couple of process things to note. One is, so councils setting a public hearing this evening. That public hearing will be an opportunity for comment. We'll also hold that public hearing open for a week after the Monday council meeting for additional comment and council consideration. So we will be more opportunities, but we appreciate your taking the time this evening. Seeing no additional comment on the the consent agenda will, I'm sorry, Mr. Hess.
Thanks, Mayor. I should have lowered my hand. You covered what I was going to say. I was, I wanted to thank the commenter for the comments. And I wanted to say specifically that the state law requires this to come in front of council a number of times. And so this is a preliminary reading. And the final adoption, as the mayor mentioned, is in May. And this will be in the Land Use and Planning Committee at that time as well. And so the vote tonight is more procedural and not substantive. And I, and so, thank you.
And we'll also make note of those clerical errors. And if there is an error in the map, we'll ask staff to address that as well. So thank you for pointing that out. With that, seeing no additional comment, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, I think I'm ready now. Anderson?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes, with an abstention on 5.8.
Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
And West?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your votes? That is 11 eyes and one absent on all of the items except for 5.8. And that one is 11 eyes, excuse me, 10 eyes, zero nays, one abstention, and one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Bynum. Consent agenda is approved. My apologies, I blew right past general public comment. Anyone care to offer comment on non-agenda items this evening? All right, seeing none, we have no comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum. We do have a number of proclamations as a function of our special presentations. Pardon me. Whereas, ladies and gentlemen, volunteers are one of our country's greatest resources. And whereas volunteers had to adapt to the changing needs of the community during the pandemic, and they showed their resilience and creativity in finding new ways to help people and encourage others. And whereas these volunteers improve our community with their dedication, willingness to share time and expertise, and ability to meet community needs, to make a lasting difference. And whereas we wish to honor and recognize collectively the many contributions that volunteers make to enhance Missoula County's quality of life. Now, therefore, we, John Ingean, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the Missoula Board of County Commissioners, in coordination with Missoula Agent Services, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th to 24th, 2021 as Volunteer Recognition Week. And we encourage all citizens to join us in recognizing our county's volunteers throughout this week and throughout the entire year. Our second proclamation this evening. Whereas Mary Lou Cordis has served the Western Montana community for more than 40 years as a highly valued member of the Missoula City Cemetery Board. And whereas Mary Lou has dedicated her time and service to the community by enacting constructive change at the Missoula City Cemetery. And whereas Mary Lou has provided great historical perspective and enriched the lives of the Missoula City Cemetery Board members through priceless mentorships and enjoyable conversations. And whereas Mary Lou has helped preserve the history and culture of the cemetery and created a legacy of excellence that will stand for generations to come. And whereas the presence and influence of Mary Lou in Missoula has enriched our, has enriched our community in countless ways. Now, therefore, I, John Ingean, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, hereby recognize the 30th day of April 2021 as Mary Lou Cordis Day. And for those of you who don't know, Mary Lou has been a tireless and longtime volunteer at the cemetery and a great defender of that public asset. And likely one of the longest-serving volunteer board members in the city of Missoula's history. So we appreciate everything that Mary Lou has done. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, whereas Arbor Day is a special day observed through the nation and around the world since 1874 for the planting of trees. And whereas Missoula has been a tree city USA recipient for 32 years, and our city is blessed with beautifully treed mountainsides, tree-lined rivers, and canopy-covered yards giving us pleasurable places for living, working, and playing. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, intercept stormwater, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, John Ingean, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in Missoula. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's urban forestry plan, and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. And that was a lot of proclaiming this evening. Move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. These, pardon me, state law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting comment on a variety of issues in a formal way, following a staff report on each of these items. We will take public comment. That public comment period will extend beyond this evening for a week or until council takes the item up again for final consideration. Our first public hearing this evening is on an ordinance amending Missoula Municipal Code's excavation permit language. And Mr. Monroe has our staff report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I am Troy Monroe, City Engineer for Development Review. Tonight's changes are in Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, specific to the chapter on excavations, 1224. I'm going to share my screen here. So what this, the intent of this is to take our excavation inspections. Right now, we have 20 different types and bring them online to meet with the same app that the building permits are under. This is an app system. In addition to them calling in or texting in, they can use this app system. So what we're doing in Title 1224 is to change the wording to allow this to occur. I'll share again. In addition to changing the wording so that we can actually use the application, we are extending the permit to, from 15 days to full 180 days that coincide with the right-of-way permit. We included the new stormwater inspections. We added a little bit of a change there to include the new Public Works Manual as our reference. And then, since we were in this chapter, we did some other cleanup. One of them is to make the patch back the same as what's in our Public Works Manual, which is three inches for local roads, four inches for arterials, and up to six inches on the state routes. The last item that we're changing is that before someone can remove the traffic control for their excavation, they need to have a hardened surface in place. So that will be asphalt or concrete most of the year, but also cold patch in the winter time. And that just ensures that we don't have any, anyone driving over potholes and that kind of stuff due to these excavations. So those are the main changes. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. I did not know that my two minutes was a word until this evening. I learned something every day as Mayor of the City of Missoula. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience care to comment? All right, seeing none. Are there questions from council? Right, seeing none, we will keep this public hearing open for the week, and council will consider it under final consideration. Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Our second public hearing this evening is Uh, our second public hearing this evening is on an ordinance amending municipal code uh to change the title uh for cemetery leadership, and Ms. Emery has our staff report.
So I am Katie. I am the Admin Services Manager for Public Works and Mobility. Uh, the first uh public hearing I have tonight is to do a title change for um the cemetery. Pull up a little presentation.
And Katie, without objection, I think you can, you can do both of the uh, both of the changes.
Okay, so I'll write with council.
Looks like it.
So, um, we put together a little presentation here just to break down everything that we are presenting to council. Uh, the first one being uh teen, changing the um title um for this. Instead of Cemetery Director, we're changing it to a Superintendent. Um, this just falls in line with how Public Works and Mobility is structured. Uh, just makes sense for us. And in that section, we're also adding um that we reference the current job description um in the uh responsibilities of the Cemetery Superintendent, so that it falls in line with um the current City of Missoula hiring um protocols. So that is the first one. Um, the uh eight point three, um, we're making these changes to clarify ordinance language that's been around for a while. Um, reduce some redundancies that we've seen um and some inaccuracies that we don't do anymore. Uh, remove outdated procedures and requirements. Um, allow the cemetery to advance or adapt documentation, pro, procedures at times, and situations evolve. Uh, allow for future development of cemetery projects and sections, and this also goes along with the cemetery strategic plan that council adopted just a few weeks ago. With the strategic plan, it will help the cemetery remain relevant and pursue alternative and cost-effective intermittent options. Um, allow cremation remains be placed in an individual columbarium monuments, and allow for the creation of a pet ossuary, which I do believe um council approved in the FY twenty budget. Uh, the first portion of the changes are for twelve point four, four point zero one zero. Um, this is allowing the cemetery to pursue alternative intermittent options as needed. So we um move forward. Uh, this goes along with um suggestions in the str- uh strategic plan. Twelve point forty-four point zero three zero, removing obituaries, uh which is an outdated requirement that the cemetery does not need. Twelve point forty-four point five zero, conveyance of assignment, um just cleaning up language and clarifying errors, as legal errors. Uh, twelve point forty-four point five zero, um removing outdated requirements, cleaning up language, and aligns with current inheritance laws. Twelve point forty-four point five zero, again, um this section um removes outdated requirements, cleaning up language, and again, aligns with current inheritance laws. Twelve point forty-four point zero seven zero, um corrects the reserve fund name, which was suggested in the strategic plan. Twelve point forty-four point one one zero allows for the creation of a pet ossuary in the future. Twelve point forty-four point one two zero, uh moves outdated requirements, cleaning up language, and aligns with the inheritance laws. Twelve point forty-four point one two zero removes a redundant fee and allows for future cremation monument use. Twelve point forty-four point one seven zero removes outdated requirements, cleans up language, and clarifies use of memorials. And last one, twelve point forty-four point two four five provides a cemetery with avenue to pursue alternative intermittent options, build a pet ossuary, and stay relevant. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Ms. Emery. Uh, with that, I will open the public hearing on both ordinance amendments. And that public hearing will remain open as well. And seeing none this evening, any questions or comments for council members? All right, seeing none of those. Thanks again, Ms. Emery. Uh, we have no additional public hearings this evening, nor do we have any items for final consideration. Uh, I will pass on communications from the mayor and begin general council comments with Mr. Ramos.
Pass. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones. Ms. West.
I just wanna congratulate the Office of Neighborhoods for pulling off a pretty awesome uh neighborhood cleanup event this weekend. I don't know how it went in other neighborhoods, but here on the north side, we had a great time, and we collected a whole giant dumpster full of trash um and uh found some really cool things along the way. So, thanks.
Mr. Kantoz?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Mr. Von Losberg?
Thanks. I uh wasn't quick enough on the draw during um consent agenda, but relative to the rail yard cleanup and the council resolution, I wanted to thank all of my colleagues on council for unanimously supporting that resolution. I wanted to specifically thank um uh my colleague, Ms. West, in Word One, for her outstanding work on it. I wanted to thank uh John Adams in the city's Brownfields uh uh area um uh for his excellent work on this. Lots of other people from the city, uh Laval and Ellen Buchanan, L- Laval Means and Ellen Buchanan from MRA. Um, and Aaron Pean, um have also supported this. Uh, appreciate the city um administration weighing in on this cleanup effort. And I just wanted to draw attention to it. In some respects, it would be almost valuable to have this under committee reports to draw perhaps a little bit more attention uh to it. Um, it's really important, and it builds on the success uh in a similar way that we had in, in getting the Department of Environmental Quality to change their cleanup plan with the White Plains Sash area, and um uh perhaps we'll be successful there as well. And a really important uh component of that is the public weighing in. And uh so I, as Heidi did, I wanna urge folks to do that, and also wanna recognize that one of the values or valuable aspects of our council resolution, as was the case with White Plains Sash, was that it led to a number of other agencies and entities within the city and community from a variety of different areas. Uh, during committee, we heard about uh the Health Board, for instance, weighing in on this, and, and that happened before. And so these are meaningful actions, and um to circle back to the beginning, really wanted to thank Heidi and, and John.
Ms. Vasika?
Oh, pass. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hess?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Becerra?
Pass. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to find the unmute button. Um, wanna thank everybody who volunteered this weekend in the various neighborhood cleanups uh and the fact that we acknowledge volunteerism as such an important part of our community today. I think it's really important. Um, I know lots of folks give in big and small ways, and that's what it takes to um make a thriving, amazing community like we have here in Missoula. So thankful for uh my colleagues who volunteer beyond their service here on council in the ways you do in your community and for the larger community. Um, so important, so valuable for so many organizations um in our community. I do wanna take a quick opportunity to flag for some folks that um tomorrow there will be a meeting about the temporary outdoor, safe outdoor shelter, which is in the county, out uh past Buckhouse Bridge off of Highway ninety-three, and um an update on that project and how it's going, and the um, and the continued uh work that the um Union Gospel Mission is doing on that site. So that is a community information meeting tomorrow at noon, and you can find out uh the link to that on the county's website. Again, this is all through the county, but wanted to just make an opportunity to um flag it for folks who are listening here. You can just go to the county's website and Google T S O S, and you should be able to find the link for the tomorrow at noon. It was virtual, and anyone can participate in that to find out a little bit more. And I see that the uh young person who commented earlier uh on the redevelopment is still on the line, and I want to thank them for their public comment, and we really appreciate folks who are willing to, for the first time, come and give their comment. And um just because I know it took me a while to learn the lingo when I got on council, when we say we're setting a public hearing, that means that there will be additional opportunities for you and your neighbors and the public to provide comments that that is a council meeting set for May tenth to hear more. And when we say it's in committee, it means it will be in a land use and planning committee, which means it'll be he- held or heard, sorry, on a Wednesday, in a much more full, in-depth detail about the project, what they're asking for, why they're asking for it. So uh there will be three additional opportunities for yourself and your neighbors and the public to weigh in on the decision-making process beyond just tonight. So wanted to flag that, 'cause I see that you're still in the audience. So um, I know sometimes it's easy for us to fall into uh shorthand and acronyms. Those, those of us who've been here a while wanted to pass that along, that there'll be plenty of opportunities, and we encourage yourself and your neighbors to participate. 'Cause that would make for a really robust discussion and good decision-making. So that is all. Thanks so much, everyone.
Ms. Hurt?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just building upon what Stacy commented about the temporary safe outdoor space, the T S O S.
Has really literally changed lives. Um, if you can just for a moment imagine yourself homeless for, for the sake of this conversation, and try and imagine how you stitch your life together, going from where you live to a workplace, and not having um the, the stability nor the safety of being able to just keep your own possession safe and locked up. And that's what the T S O S has been able to do. It's provided a, a place for people to feel safe and reside. As difficult as it might have been during this last winter, it at least provided them some um a, a place where they felt that they could um get on with their lives. And as, as Stacy stated, tomorrow is an opportunity for the rest of us in our community, put ourselves and where they're coming from. So I hope you can attend that, because I think it's gonna really help move the conversation in a, in a positive direction. Thanks.
Ms. Merritt?
Thanks, everyone. Um, I want to um encourage folks uh to go ahead and get your vaccines. I'm excited to say that as of tomorrow, all three of the eligible people in my immediate household will have both of their vaccines. Um, and uh excited that Missoula County is making good progress uh towards trying to get up to that seventy-five percent threshold that will uh give us herd immunity, which it's really important that we achieve that. So the um, the vaccine clinic that the Health Department is running has been super smooth. We were in and out of there so fast a couple of weeks ago. I, I couldn't believe it. They've got so many helpers. It hardly takes any time at all. So encouraging people to do that, and I wanna um thank the Missoula County Public School District as well for operating uh vaccine clinics at all of the high schools in order to get the high school students, uh those sixteen and older um who are eligible for the vaccine, to try and get some of those folks vaccinated as well. So thanks for the good work that everyone's doing, and if you haven't signed up for your shot, go out there and get your Fauci-ouchies. Thanks, guys.
We have uh, we have no committee reports this evening. Uh, we have uh one item with new business, uh that is our legislative update. Uh, we're hearing that they will be out uh this week. Um, we're also uh now dealing with a uh, an amendment uh to the large bill that uh will uh uh budget for ARPA money. Um, that bill would prevent uh local governments from having lobbyists. Um, that is, uh, the bill would, or the amendment to this bill would prevent uh the city of Missoula, Missoula County, all of the cities and towns in Montana and counties in Montana uh from having representative voices at the legislature. Uh, the lead cities and towns called a, an emergency board meeting this afternoon. Um, we'll be working on that and trying to kill that amendment uh in hopes that we can continue to have a conversation with our uh elected representatives when they are in session uh and provide them information so that they can make informed choices. Uh, and the rest just goes on. Uh, anyone have anything on the legislature this evening? All right. Seeing none. We, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hurt?
Sorry, too slow. John, I, I wanna appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that up. I missed that emergency meeting this afternoon. Um, and I think this is a really important thing, because um not being able to have a voice at the state legislature, whether you are a large community like Missoula, Montana, or if you're a small community like Shoto in the state of Montana.
It's very difficult to govern um if you don't have the ability to have some say in how we are governed. So I know sometimes we don't all agree about, on things like that, but of this nature, I, I, I think we all can rally around the idea that um local governments know their communities better than anybody else, and we should, we need that ability to be able to lobby the state legislature, so we're all as independent as we possibly can be. Thank you.
Ms. Hurt? Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Pardon me, are there any additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? And seeing none, I, as always, thank you for your service, and we will be adjourned.